All right, everybody. At this time, by my watch, it is 8:30. We will call this specially called meeting for the occasion to order. We are -- I'm glad everyone could be here. Hillary and Missy, nice to see you all. I'm sure it's not quite the same as looking at the screen and seeing your face, so I'm glad that you're here. We're here today to -- Dr. Baldwin has some information. I think everyone's aware that our governor had a press conference early in the week, made some statements, and we were just here to clarify, I think, those comments as it relates to our school system. So without further ado, Dr. Baldwin, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On Monday, February the 1st, at about 8:00 in the evening, I received some information about a proposed bill in the Senate, Senate Bill 37, that would open schools back up for in-person instruction. I want to try to present that bill, some of the information contained in that bill now. So if you'll bear with me, I'll pull it up.
I can interrupt, Dr. Baldwin. I think all the informers, in your packet, there is a letter. I think it may have some information Dr. Baldwin will talk about to each one from Governor Cooper and some other individuals. So if you want to get that laid out to the side, it might be helpful.
Basically, Senate Bill 37, which the Senate was going to take up on February the 2nd for discussion, would require local boards to provide an in-person Plan A option for all students that have an individualized education plan or an IEP or a 504. But the one component of Senate Bill 37 that was of most interest to me was that this bill would require local boards to provide an in-person Plan A or Plan B option for all students who are in grades K-12. Local boards may opt for Plan A, all Plan B, or a combination thereof. So this bill would have an impact on what we're currently providing in Macon County. As you know, our K-4 students are operating on Plan A. That's minimal social distancing required. And our 612 are operating on Plan B, which is moderate social distancing required. The big difference between Plan A and Plan B is that under Plan A, students are not required to be six feet apart while they're seated in a classroom. In Plan B, students are required to be six feet apart while seated in a classroom. You still have to maintain the six feet of separation when students are in line or when they're traveling in the hall. And in other situations like that, you have to avoid large gatherings and that sort of thing under Plan B. Now, currently, the only option that we have in terms of what we may offer our students is Plan B for grades 5, 6 through 12. Plan A is for K-4 only, pre-K-4 only, actually, pre-K-5. Our schools are all operating on Plan A in K through 4 and Plan B in 6 through 12. MVI is operating only on Plan B due to the fact that they have both grades 5 and 6 in the same building. Now, what's unique in Macon County is that, under Plan B, Nana Hala, Highlands, Union, and Early College can all have students back on campus, all of their students on campus, and still maintain that six feet of separation. That six feet of separation basically requires 36 square feet of floor space for each student. Union Academy, Macon Early College, Highlands, and Nana Hala can have all of their students on campus and still maintain that 36 square feet per student. Mountain View Intermediate, Macon Middle School, and Franklin High School are operating on Plan B, but they don't have the space available for them to be able to bring back all of their students for in-person instruction and maintain the square footage that is currently in the North Carolina toolkit. Now, so that's basically what Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C, those are the options that we currently have. Obviously, Senate Bill 37 would modify those options and allow us to bring kids back, 6 through 12, on Plan A. Again, Senate Bill 37 is in the Senate now for consideration. Once it gets through the Senate, if it gets through the Senate, it has to go through the House. Once it gets through the House, there may be some changes. There may be some modifications. Then it has to go to the governor's desk for possible veto. So there's a lot of time between what the Senate is considering and when that'll actually have an impact on our schools. Now, on February the 22nd, or February the 2nd, the governor, the state board chair, the state superintendent, and Mandy Cohen met and shared this information that I'm going to pull up on the board right now. Please bear with me, those folks that are virtual right now. This letter went out on February the 2nd, and the board, the state board chair, Eric Davis, Governor Cooper, Catherine Truitt, our new state school superintendent, and Mandy Cohen held a press conference, and basically, they advocated for all schools to offer some form of in-person instruction. They discussed how that the data is currently indicating that it is safe for all schools to offer in-person instruction. Now, on the heels of the information that the Senate was discussing at this same time contained in Senate Bill 37, there was a lot of confusion as to exactly what the governor and the state board chair were advocating. In other words, the Senate was considering legislation that would allow schools to opt for Plan A in grades 6 through 12. The governor and the state board held a press conference to suggest that schools should return to in-person instruction. But then they also indicated that the toolkit should be followed. The North Carolina Toolkit for Reopening Schools should be followed. I believe that I have that wording that I can share with you now. And what's contained in the toolkit and what wasn't really discussed in the governor's press conference was that the moderate social distancing requirements were still in place for grades 6 through 12. In other words, can y'all still see the board, those folks that are virtual?
No, sir.
All right.
So in the press conference, there was a lot of confusion about exactly what the governor and state board were advocating for. You know, they advocated for more in-person instruction in schools, but what they failed to point out was that, in the toolkit, the six-foot requirement between students in grades 6 through 12 was still in place. They also failed to point out that, while the majority of students in North Carolina are currently attending school virtually, most of the school systems in North Carolina are actually already in person, as is Macon County. Macon County is currently providing the maximum amount of in-person instruction that we can provide under the current toolkit for reopening schools. We are Plan A in grades K through 4. We are Plan B in grades 5 through 12, the exception being the 5th grade. And obviously, there are a lot of complexities involved in having 5th grade students at 100% attendance and 6th grade students at 50% attendance in one school. But it was unfortunate that there was so much confusion around Senate Bill 37, the governor's press conference, and then subsequently, the state superintendent held a virtual meeting at 3:30 on February the 2nd to discuss Senate Bill 37 and the governor's press conference. And at that, during the superintendent's meeting, there was a tremendous amount of discussion regarding what exactly the school systems in North Carolina would now be allowed to do. And really, for, as I said, for the majority of school systems in North Carolina, there were no changes. Most school systems in North Carolina are offering some form of in-person instruction. And here in Macon County, we are offering pretty much the maximum amount of in-person instruction that we can offer as a school system. Now, with that said, we are offering also the option for students to attend virtually, which is still a requirement both in Senate Bill 37 and also in what the governor communicated in his press conference. So regardless of what options are available to us moving forward, we will be required to offer a virtual option for those students who need virtual instruction. Now, at this time, I'd like to bring in Josh Lynch, if it please the board, so that he can provide us with some information regarding what we're currently offering for students, how we're providing that virtual instruction for students, and why it's important for us to set aside a day each week for students to communicate with their teacher and for families to communicate with their teacher virtually.
I'm glad to hear him coming. Hey, Josh, come in.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Where would you like for me to?
I'll turn the camera around so they can see you, Josh. Anywhere, step forward.
A bit more towards me.
Step towards the camera here. There you go. That's good.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. I appreciate the opportunity, but I do want to provide some information just regarding our virtual students and what that number entails right now currently. Just a little bit of background information. In September, we had 928 students who were virtual throughout the district. Right now, we have 507 throughout the district. And I can provide those numbers for you for each school if you would like, but one thing I wanted to make you aware of is, in order for us to effectively serve those virtual students who are 100% virtual, as well as the students who, in any given day or week, become quarantined, we have to have time within our schedule, the master schedule, to serve those students at each of our grade levels. And that is pre-K all the way through 12. Each school handles it a little bit differently. Elementarys, they're pretty much aligned here in the Valley in regards to what they are offering students. But regardless of that, we always offer a two-day Google Meet for all of our virtual students, and that is minimum. Teachers have to log on and provide those times and those support for those academic levels. But when I say two days minimum, we also offer times before school. We offer times after school in order to meet the needs of all of our students. So teachers are putting in a lot more time across the district at all levels in order to provide that. One thing I also wanted to make you aware of, in terms of those Friday days, we just got through EOC testing, and if it weren't for those Fridays, we would not have been able to get the participation rate that we have currently to serve those students with EOC testing. And we just now have finished up all EOC testing, and the window opened two weeks before Christmas break.
Josh, would you clarify with the board the EOC requirements? And also, what we'll be faced with in the spring for those virtual kids?
Yes.
Even though they're virtual, they have to come into the building to take a test.
Yes, so the state still has a 95% rule for participation in any state mandated test. And that is even with COVID. So we have a lot of students who are virtual, as you guys can see. So in order to test them in the EOC subject area, or even in the spring, EOG as well as EOCs, we have to bring them on-site. We can't test them in a virtual or remote setting. So in order to bring them on-site, we have to make the accommodation for that student and for that family that they would feel comfortable doing. And so in order to do that, we've had to really be crafty with our testing settings. And most of the parents and the students that we have tested outside of the window have asked for a more one-on-one or much smaller testing environment, and they felt comfortable with those Friday day offerings that we could provide. So we were able to offer that really due to the fact that we have Fridays as that virtual day for all students. Teachers are then able to work on Google Meets, provide extra class time, provide supports, and that is county-wide. But then with testing, as well as benchmarks with iStation, we are able to bring in students one-on-one and some small group to be able to test and meet that 95% state mandated rule for testing participation. And that will still hold true in the spring. The thing about that, it won't just be at the high school level. We will also be testing EOGs, which will start in 3rd grade. And that will be 3rd all the way through. So we will have levels of testing from 3rd grade through 12th grade that we will have to accommodate and have various testing plans for each site to accommodate our students who are 100% virtual, but also, we have to accommodate those students who could be quarantined during that period. And that was one thing that we have really been up against during the whole testing season this past go-round.
And the spring will be much more complicated than the fall semester was in terms of testing.
It will. We'll have a much higher level of students that we have to test, and then you're bringing on individuals in 3rd grade all the way through 8th grade that we haven't, you know, had to test yet.
Any questions for Josh? Thank you, Josh.
Yes.
So I wanted to bring you that information regarding our virtual students. And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I think we have a person, Mr. DeVille, would like to address the board.
Yes, I think everyone's here is familiar with John. John DeVille, he is our outstanding teacher there at the high school. I think he has some additional information he would like to bring to the board. So, Mr. DeVille?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for getting me on the agenda this morning and moving me up to the front line here. Thank you to the board for your attention to this matter. Before I start, I just wanted to comment. Listening to Dr. Baldwin's debrief of the situation, I read a ton of news on that stuff all day, every day. The synopsis that you just heard from Dr. Baldwin, this is good of a synopsis, clear, concise, to the point, with all the key issues and contradictions that I think you're going to find anywhere. And then listening to Mr. Lynch speak, it just speaks to the innumerable moving parts of this situation. I wanted to speak to the board and to Dr. Baldwin and to everybody who's listening this morning about the ABC Collaborative study. And the reason I wanted to speak to it is that this is the primary study that all of the policy is rests on. This is the study that boards are being handed. When you listen to the press conference on February 2nd, with Governor Cooper, Department of Health and Human Services Secretary Dr. Mandy Cohen, State Board Chairman Eric Davis, and State Superintendent Public Instruction Catherine Truitt spoke, they either all mentioned directly or tangentially that study. This is what we are relying on when we are considering the state and then as 116 or so, illeated across the state, what we're considering when we go, if we increase face-to-face instruction. So I think, carefully, you know, critical scrutiny is in order of the study and especially the limitations of the study. For anybody who's not familiar with the ABC Collaborative, this is a top-flight group of scientists, epidemiologists, pediatricians at Duke University. And I am not calling into question whatsoever their expertise, their knowledge, their mission. I am calling into question some of the messaging around the study. That's all I'm looking at critically this morning, is the messaging around the study. So, and I'm hoping you can see what I'm presenting here. You've got that on your screen. Can you see that?
Yes, we can see it.
So, this is what we're glomming on to mostly as a state, that there were only 32 which had secondary transmission across 11 districts that the ABT Collaborative study in the nine weeks that they did their research. Okay, that's the top line of the study that we're focusing on. But I wanted to show you, I mean, this is when they did their data collection. They did their data collection during one of the lowest moments of COVID spread in the state. Now, ABC has been flooded with this, and their pushback is, well, there were some moments there where some of these counties were actually spiking, but they're just, they weren't not anywhere near where we are now. And in late September and October, that's a world apart of January and February '21. So I want to look, I want to call your attention to the period that the data was collected that we are now facing policy going forward, possibly in this county and statewide. My friend Chris Nordstrom, the NC Polite, that the report relied on a contact tracing effort from local departments rather than universal testing. And then that right there is one of the chief limitations of the study, is that there was not universal testing of students and staff. There was no way to compel testing, contact tracing, testing of the students and staff. I think I've covered that point right there. No school district and no county health department can compel it. And even if they could compel it, a lot of the counties just don't have the capacity. And we, more or less, contact tracing here in Macon County just don't have the capacity to simultaneously do contact tracing at all levels and deliver back steam. Here's another limitation. The report note, even though these schools were in person, they were essentially, they were all hybrid. In other words, they were all Plan B. And to extrapolate, you know, that Plan B situations extrapolated to a safe Plan A, I find that questionable. There was no study of asymptomatics for that. We think, if you look at CDC, WHO, if you look at other leading scientific outlet in this country and across the world, we think that 20%, 50% cases are from asymptomatic area. Children are more likely to be asymptomatic. But that's, you know, that was totally because there's no universal testing. We want the ABCs that doesn't look at asymptomatic spread. Now here, I think this might be one of the things. If you look at the ABC study, this is lifted straight from their study. And they are very clear about the limitations of this study. There was no way that it would be published in any peer-reviewed journal. There's no way that they would take experience leak by this scientific community without them noting the limitations of their study. Here's the problem. When they go to public-based forums, whether it's Blueboards or then other policymakers like Governor or Dr. Cohen rely upon them, limitations of the study just never seem to make it into the narrative. And I don't see how we can focus on the top line that there were only 32 cases of transmission at schools over a nine-week period across a lot of counties and not focus on this particular limitation. Let's see here. I think I'm just going to pass that one. I don't want to bore you here. But I would say that, again, when, this was, that last slide was presentation to afford. There was, they, we see collaborative improvement of the limitations of the study. And again, let, this, two problems here. You know, Plan A, they did look at some counties. It's set to figure out, because not everything is Plan A when the community spread is at 15 and 20 at January. And here's the secondary thing, you know, Plan A, which is the only thing, K-5 is the only population that's allowed to be Plan A. I don't see how we can extrapolate Plan A data, which only looks at K-5 population, and extrapolate and say, you're going to get the same kind of transmission of spread in a grade 6 through 12. And I think, you know, I would point to the spread issues that we have seen with athletic teams at both the high school and the university level across the state in the last three months. It's a different population that has different proximity issues than that K-4 population. This is another moment right here. This is from, you know, less than a month ago, when Dr. Zimmerman from the Collaborative is presenting to the school board in Johnston County. And she's going on, she's focusing on the top line, but she never mentions whatsoever any of the limitations of the study. And she's talking about, I think that this is, the key word that comes out of the ABC Collaborative is this, mitigation measures, mitigation measures, mitigation measures. That is their bread and butter. That is what they're selling. If you can social distance, if you can mask, if you can do robust contact tracing, then you can go back to school safely. But what she's not mentioning is that the limitations on contact tracing, we just don't have the capacity for it. And again, she made no mention of the limitations of the study. I've already covered this right here. All of these reports, everything that we are looking at right now, looked at the original variant of the virus. None of the studies that we have in our hands today take into account the UK variant, the Brazil variant, the South African variant. And so again, even if these studies were, I think, far more solid than they, I think they are, they don't take into account these new variations that appear to be more variant, more pathogenic. And so I think this is, to me, this is maybe the bottom line. As policymakers, as teachers, as students, as parents, as everybody who has anything at all to do with public education, are we hearing what we want to hear because we desperately want to hear that? We all want, there's not anybody in North Carolina that's involved with public education, whether you're a student, or a parent, or faculty member, or administrator, or board member, does not desperately want to be back face-to-face full-time. That's what everybody wants. And I think we have to tell ourselves, as critical thinkers, that are we really hearing the science? Or are we hearing what we want to hear because we so desperately want to hear that? And I'll close with this. Duke University, excuse me, is the home of the Collaborative. Well, Duke's women's basketball team has called a quits for the season, as has Virginia's. So the place where the study emanates, the basketball team has called it, and then this is just from yesterday. Duke University itself is on the threshold of shutting down. Maybe they can stay, they can stay open for face-to-face, but they are looking at going full remote. And they have, if there's any university in North Carolina that has been vigilant, it's been Duke University. They have done everything they can, you know, They have done everything they can, you know, with massive amounts of contact tracing, insisting on testing, trying to lock the students down. And it's, the spread is just so high right now, they are barely holding on. Only one quarter of epidemiologists in this country right now would send their kids to school or even on outdoor playdates. I think that that is an important data point right there. And this is the last thing. And this is what NCAA is asking for across the state. That for those of teachers who want them, and I totally understand that not every teacher, not every staff member wants a vaccine. I think they ought to have that right respect to, to not be compelled to have the vaccine. But for those of us that want the vaccine, that think that vaccine is really an essential fix solution to make us safer in a classroom, if we can hold on to where every teacher and staff member who wants those two vaccines can get them before we go back with increased face-to-face instruction, we would certainly appreciate that opportunity. And I think that is, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman and Board members and Dr. Baldwin. If you've got any questions or comments, I'm happy to take them.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. DeVille? I think he gave a very concise.
I think saying what a lot of the teachers are saying, they need the shots, they want the shot before, because they deal with, some of them are older.
Right.
Some of them deal with their parents or whatever. So what he's saying is right.
I don't know if you heard that, Mr. DeVille, Mr. Cave was talking about.
I did, I did. Thank you, Mr. Cave. Love you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Doesn't appear to be.
Has there been any word about us having that available to our teachers?
Right. John, we're going to break off into some other discussions. Thank you very much for information. I thought you brought up some very valid points. And obviously, as a board, we're looking for all the information we can get as we make some tough decisions. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All right, goodbye. Now I'll let Chris answer your questions about vaccines, Missy.
Teachers are currently in Phase 1B Group 2, and Julie Rogers is on the line, and Kathy McGah asked them to update us on when teachers will, when we think teachers will be able to receive vaccines. But, you know, going back to the Senate Bill 37, the Governor's discussion on Tuesday, I think it's obvious that at some point this semester, schools will be given the choice of going to Plan A if we choose to do so. Now, currently, our K-4 schools are in Plan A. And, you know, we've been in Plan A since early October. And I'll ask Julie to chime in on this, but, you know, obviously, we have seen some positive cases. We've had some quarantines. And Julie, I think that I'm correct in saying that we've identified a likely student-to-staff transmission at one of our schools. It looks like that that probably occurred between one of our EC students who was not required to wear a mask and that staff member. We had an outbreak in one of our EC classrooms, and it looks like transmission did occur in that class. And I bring that up to refer back to the Senate Bill 37, which requires local boards of education to provide an in-person Plan A option for all students that have an individualized education plan or an IEP or 504 plan. I've shared this information regarding that exposure and possible transmission with our legislators, just so that they're aware as they consider this bill of what that requirement of offering Plan A for all students with an IEP, what that requirement brings with it in terms of possible exposures. Julie, while you're sharing your information, I'm going to try to pull up our current numbers so that the board can see where we are today with regard to COVID-19 in our schools.
Okay, Dr. Baldwin, I was just going to give a little bit of background and.
Oh, did I lose her? I thought it was that way.
County Public Health.
Julie?
So each student that is quarantined for Macon County Schools.
Julie, Julie?
Julie, I'm sorry. In trying to pull up our numbers, unintentionally stopped the meeting. So could you start back over?
Sure. So I just wanted to point out, as Mr. DeVille was addressing about contact tracing, we do provide that for students in Macon County Schools. Every student that's quarantined in Macon County Schools receives an individual phone call and contact tracing for their specific case that is completed through all of the Macon County School nurses in collaboration with Macon Public Health contact tracing staff. So that process takes an extended period of time. We are currently able to sustain the volume under the current plan that we are in in Macon County. We are able to give that information. The quarantine option in the North Carolina Toolkit for Schools can be quite confusing. And they do take some time per case to explain their options for each family to decide what is appropriate for them. Continue to give the family information as things change. There's a lot of variables that happen within each situation. Those quarantine students, as you see here on the board with those numbers, each case would contain a phone call to let them know about a quarantine, and usually that can qualify phone calls per case. So the time capacity is pretty high in these situations. We are seeing more positives currently at Franklin High School in the older student population than we have seen in the elementary area. And that brings a little concern as we look toward changing the current plan. Right now, we are sustaining and we're doing well, and students are, for the most part, keeping quarantines at a controllable level. Increasing student volume and days of attendance would increase the quarantines quite a bit.
Julie, do you want to comment on how Plan A has been going from your viewpoint in our schools in grades K through 4?
I think it's gone excellent because they are still able, for the most part, to maintain six-foot distance. They're still, although they're in Plan A, they're still implementing the moderate strategies that are going to keep COVID spread down. So they are in Plan A, but they're doing a great job in maintaining the distance and continuing to enforce mask wearing for students, and students are complying well. So I feel like it's under control in those areas.
And I think that does give us some hope for being able to implement Plan A at grade 6, 12. But I agree with you that there are obviously going to be additional opportunities for exposure and additional transmission. And along with that will come additional quarantines. And my big concern is that without vaccination of our school staff, if you increase the student population on campus each day, you're going to have a likelihood of increasing the number of exposures and increasing the number of subsequent quarantines as a result. So my fear with a rush to Plan A would be that we would actually go from providing in-person instruction two or three days a week for all of our students to actually being forced to go to virtual instruction for all of our students for a period of time due to quarantines. Julie, would you have any comment on that?
Yes, I completely agree to that. And right now, in monitoring with this spreadsheet, there's an additional piece that they, that the rest of the public can't see that involves names and depth that we monitor and manage, basically, as school nurses. Right now, at this volume, we can maintain that. If that volume increases, we can't. And in maintaining that, right now, we've got people in quarantine that if we don't have the time to monitor and make sure they're, you know, out on the dates that they're supposed to be and returning the dates they're supposed to be, we can have students returning while they're still in an infectious period. So it takes a lot of time to kind of monitor these situations. We can handle it right now at the current volume. My concern is, you know, as quarantines would increase with Plan A, we would, that would be greater than the volume that we could maintain safely.
Thank you, Julie. Board, do you have any questions for Julie regarding the quarantines that we're currently seeing or any information that she's provided so far?
I think what she said, one thing, I'm finding out the old winters are not able to keep the six-foot separation in classrooms.
And they're not required to keep the six-foot.
Right, right.
You know, I think that they are doing it as much as they can. But, you know, with K-4 especially, it's hard to keep those kids.
With 25 kids or?
Yeah, with 25 kids, it's hard to keep them six feet apart all day long. Julie, I think Kathy's with you, Kathy McGah. Does she have any comments or anything she'd like to share?
Again, I think it gets back down to, you know, the capacity that we have to serve the needs of the school. And right now, like Julie said, we're able to do that. Obviously, there would be an increased number of quarantines and cases if you were going back into Plan A with not being able to socially distance. So, you know, we just wouldn't be able to serve you and meet the need that you would have. And that's my fear, is that we wouldn't be able to do that.
Well, but along with that as well is the important role that vaccines will play in allowing our teachers to safely return, all of our school staff to safely return to a Plan A scenario. Kathy, do you have any idea or any foresight as to when teachers and school staff, all of our school staff, might be able to receive their vaccine?
And that's a, that's a big question. It's, of course, a big topic of conversation across the state. We know that recently, the state kind of revamped their way of looking at the different groups. And they're now talking about five different groups where teachers fall in Group 3. We are currently vaccinating Groups 1 and 2, which are critical healthcare workers and those that are 65 and older. Frontline essential workers fall in Group 3, and that's where they have teachers. And we have, they have told us that we have to get through vaccinating Groups 1 and 2 before we can move as a state onto Group 3. So we know at the current rate that we're giving allocations of vaccine, it's going to be numerous weeks before we finish Groups 1 and 2, unless vaccine supply increases dramatically. We have approximately 4,000 people on a wait list right now.
And at 300 vaccines per week, it's going to take some time to get through those folks.
Right. If that, if the supply does not increase, it's going to be quite some time before we can be able to offer first doses to teachers.
Now, if our school staff were vaccinated, that certainly would reduce the likelihood that they would be quarantined and have to stay home and possibly only be able to provide virtual instruction. So the sooner we can get our staff vaccinated, the sooner we can return safely to in-person instruction for all of our students.
Yes.
If someone receives the vaccination and they are exposed, for instance, if a teacher has had the vaccination, a child in the classroom is positive, are they required to quarantine even though they've had the vaccination?
Julie or Kathy, could you hear what Hillary from Holland's asked?
I did. That's a very good question because they haven't actually come out with the guidance for those, like, given that situation for us. So we know that the vaccine, the vaccine is not 100% and that you still have a risk of getting the infection too, even though you've had the vaccine. So we're waiting to see what the guidance is for that.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other questions for Julie or Kathy?
Kathy, this is Jim Reedlove. Not trying to put you on the spot, but I am reading things where our new administration are looking at some alternative methods like shipping vaccines to pharmacies and to directly to health providers. Do you have any insight as to is that going to take place? And if so, when? And what it might mean as far as the availability of vaccines?
Well, you know, I would, I would love to see that happen. The more people that we have to be able to provide the vaccine, the better. However, the state of North Carolina is, as a whole, receiving a certain quantity. And right now, that's approximately 120,000 to 140,000 doses a week. And no matter how you divide that out, that's not enough. So that's where we need to see the change, is the actual number of vaccine that we are being given as a state as a whole. In order for, you know, there's much more capacity to give vaccine across the state than there is supply right now. And we're just waiting for the vaccine supply to increase to the state.
Is there, have you by chance gotten any indication that might be improving?
You need to ask her again.
I'm sorry, Kathy. So that's a very valid point, I totally understand. But is there anything that you've heard possibly that that, the amount that would be coming might possibly increase with the new distribution efforts or no?
Well, we've seen an increase. We're expecting a slight increase, but it's nowhere near, again, the demand that we have for this vaccine. So something would have to drastically change in order for us to really be successful in vaccinating everyone that wants it in the next couple of months even.
Okay.
I think, I think we went from 120,000 to 147,000 shots this week, matter of fact. It's either this week or next week. But it's, you know, that's not anywhere near enough of vaccine to meet the demand of people that want this vaccination and need it.
Do we know how many teachers actually want the vaccination right now? Like, how many would we need school-wide to vaccinate those teachers?
Kathy, in the information that you've received from our teachers that have applied for the vaccine, do you know how many of our school employees have requested a vaccine?
I don't, actually. We, we have, you know, we have.
I have to mute while she speaks.
Looked uploaded the entire spreadsheet of all teachers and made it available to them to get registered in CBMS. But we don't have a way of determining how many of them actually want that. So that information would be helpful if there's a way for you to collect that from teachers in your system.
John, do you have any comment on that?
It's theoretically possible to do. It's, you know, protecting information as a personnel matter on our, in our hands and then in the Health Department's hands. It's protected health information for each of those employees. But we handle lots of confidential information. So I don't, I don't think that the, you know, they have to be handled carefully, but that information can be collected and can be confidentially passed along and managed either on the Health Department's side or on your side of things, I think, yes. And from what I understand, and I don't really know the workings of how it happened in a couple of counties that I know folks are aware of, that however it happened, that teachers did get bumped up to the front of the line somehow and didn't receive vaccination. What I understand is the way that happened is the Health Department and the school system kind of worked together to make a list of who would be available and ready to go at a moment's notice when those vaccines became available. And so I think there's definitely a process that we can, we can model that some of these other districts have done. So I'd be happy to work with you and with Kathy and Julie to develop that process.
We've actually already done that. The Health Department has a list of our employees who would like to be vaccinated. I think the issue for Julie and Kathy is that.
That who has been, is that it?
Well, they don't know who are school employees or, am I understanding you right, Julie and Kathy? Can you explain?
Well, I thought that the list I got was the entire school system. So it didn't distinguish between those that wanted the vaccine and those that were not interested in getting the vaccine. So I think that we, we uploaded them, and if they chose not to register in CBMS because they're not interested in getting the vaccine, we don't know that.
So, Dr. Baldwin, there's some policy discussion there too that we need to have about how to, and whether and to what extent. I know Mr. DeVille pointed out that, you know, folks sometimes just are choosing not to or feel like they don't want the, to take the vaccine. or feel like they don't want to take the vaccine for, you know, for the reasons of their own. There is some law surrounding whether or not you can compel it. There are circumstances in which you have to let somebody have an exception for that, but it's, you know, the extent to which you're going to require everybody who is not, doesn't have a legal reason not to take the vaccine to get it is something we need to discuss somewhat. And I think maybe if you make that decision first and then you can begin to have that discussion with individual employees.
Any other questions for...
So, when we're talking about children with disabilities and they are required, they can come to school under Plan A, what about the possibility of that being a high-assense area for those teachers for the vaccine to be addressed for those folks? Is that a possibility?
Julak, Kathy, is there any questions for you guys?
He is on the side of Tokyo.
That's a good question. I'll have to look into that. I don't know the answer.
And I will, Dr. Baldwin, I will share with the board members and to Carol's point, Brooke probably has some information about this as well. One of the concerns with the way that SB 37 is written about compelling Plan A attendance for students, EC students, by four-plan students, is that, yes, again, and as Mr. DeVille said, we all agree, let's get every, and you have said, let's get everybody back in school as soon as it's safe to do so. We're all in favor of that. It kind of ignores the fact that disability, you know, their plans are going to vary widely in terms of what's required and, you know, a student may have, it ignores inclusion, for example. So, you've got a student who's supposed to be included in a mainstream class during the day. Well, if those classes are Plan B, then what are we, you know, how do you adjust for their plan? There's not a, just saying, it's a great notion to say, we're all going to get them all back because we need those students in school to serve them, but what that actually means on the ground, we need a whole lot of work and even down to individual student plans.
Actually, I think that's sort of what we've seen in Macon County with regard to the possible student-staff transmission. It was actually, Brooke, do you want to comment on any of those concerns?
Yes. So, every student in our system that has a 504 or an IEP has a remote learning contingency plan. And in that, the IEP trains specifically, we specifically looked at that child's issues, where they needed support, and if we can safely bring them back in. And I think one of the big concerns that we have is our students who require support throughout the day and who need, to where you can't maintain six feet between a teacher or a paraprofessional. They just require that level of service. And many of those students in that demographic, they can't wear the masks and comply with those things. So, there are many layers, you know, to considering what we can safely do to keep our staff safe, bring our kids safe, and try to serve them. But I feel like as a school system, we have been very proactive in getting our students back in the building and keeping our staff safe. We've made allowances for our OCS population, our self-contained population, to come four days a week, and their numbers are such that we're able to distance to the greatest extent possible and keep them in the building. So, there's a lot of facets to it and there have been concerns raised by folks where we've had, you know, we've had a case of a transmission. So, it's a catch-22.
And I will also say, Dr. Baldwin, I really don't feel like, you know, we don't need compulsion by the General Assembly to emphasize that. It's, I think we need to attend to those students' needs because each and every one of them has a potential claim for a failure to provide them a free, appropriate public education. We don't need this thing telling us that you may need to get these kids in to serve them. That's what our EC folks are doing day-to-day to try to do that to the greatest extent it can possibly be done. So, I'm just pointing all that out to if and however SB 37 discussions move forward, as you and board members are having discussions with legislators, I hope they will really take a hard look at how that particular requirement is supposed to work because it's really hard to figure.
Thank you, Brooke. Thanks, John. Any questions for those? So, you know, with all the information that's been shared today, what we learned from the General Assembly's consideration of Senate Bill 37, what we learned from the Governor's press conference, the State Board of Education's information, the State Superintendent's information, I think that we've got to understand that there is a possibility that our school system will have the option to return to Plan A at some point this semester, and we just need to be prepared for that. A couple of concerns that we have regarding Plan A as it's currently implemented and following the protocols that are set forth in the K-12 toolkit for reopening schools. Number one, while our schools are in Plan A, our classrooms are in Plan A, students can be in the classroom with minimal social distancing requirements. And this allows all of our students to come back to the classroom for in-person instruction in grades K-4, with the caveat that Plan B must still be implemented on school buses and in school transportation. This means that while on the bus, we can only transport one student in each bus seat unless they're from the same household. So, we're very limited with regard to transportation. Now, I cannot promise you that on any given day, we're not violating this policy because when our bus drivers pull up to a bus stop and there are children at that stop, we're going to bring them to school. And we have to mitigate possible transmissions as much as possible while on those buses, but this is a challenge for us. Now, my concern moving forward is that unless they change these protocols, if we're implementing a Plan A in the classroom, which is minimal social distancing requirement, but still maintaining a Plan B for transportation, then our school doors will be open, but we won't necessarily be able to transport all the students who would like to return for in-person instruction. So, these protocols need to be considered, and if they're not considered, we need to plan on how we're going to deal with having our school doors wide open, but our bus doors partially open.
And, Dr. Baldwin, that's another aspect of that bill that needs a lot of clarification. I mean, you know, it does require, you know, provision of transportation and lunch, it says, you know, but it doesn't go into any detail whatsoever about, you know, any kind of social distancing requirements or anything of that nature. So, that's another question mark of many with that bill.
Thank you, John. So, basically, the purpose in this meeting was to provide clarification regarding the current Senate Bill 37, which is before the Senate, the Governor's press conference, and also to let the school board and the community know that currently Macon County is providing the maximum level of in-person instruction that's available to us under the current law, the current requirements and protocols. And I want to take this opportunity to commend this board for being able to adjust your schedule and to show up at 8:30 in the morning on a workday to consider this information. I think it speaks to the level of commitment that each of you have to the students of Macon County. I want to express my gratitude for your willingness to meet today and discuss this information.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Julie, are you still on?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to pass on to you, hope springs eternal that our vaccines may start increasing. And I think Dr. Baldwin has relayed, but just on behalf of the board, let me pass on to you and Kathy. Whatever our system can do, be it in the form of clinics or whatever, to expedite the vaccination, not only of our teachers but of all of our staff, we stand ready to do that. So, please don't hesitate to ask us, I mean, literally, anything that we can do to help that, we certainly will jump in and help with that, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Board members, anything else? Looking, I see, Dr. Baldwin, thank you. I think as John DeVille said, you did a very, did an outstanding job of breaking it down for us, put it in order, and I think we all understand, I hope everyone that's listening in will understand our positions. And so, before I close, I'll look at any board members, see any other comments at all, guys? I see a lot of heads going back and forth. All right. At this time, we will make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
We'll move.
In a second.
Second.
All in favor, see if I'm saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Thank you, everyone, for being here, those that's come in via streaming. We appreciate your participation and...